Well, you can start our meeting. We're good now.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sit down in the end there. Everybody here gets you done.
This is a joint work session with the Marquette Township Board and the Marquette County Road Commission. Today's April 19th, 2022. It's Tuesday and just like 4:33 PM. And we just want to see what the other parties are doing, everybody on the other side of the table. So, you want to do a roll call, Randy?
Okay, so for us, it's a work session. For you guys, it's a special meeting. So, we can't do any action other than just information exchange for us. But, okay, so roll call is trustee Iverson's absent and excused. Trustee Winslow is absent and excused. I think she's on her way. Trustee Marks is absent and excused. And trustee LaRue?
Here.
Treasure Johnson?
Here.
Clerk Rattar is here. And Supervisor Durant.
Here. Okay. Um, did you do agendas for us? I don't see one.
Yeah, yeah, we got one right here. There's ones over in the corner over there.
Okay. I looked in my box. I should have asked you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Public comment is next.
All right, we'll leave those for them. Any public comment? Anybody want to address the least our board before we start? Okay. So, our discussion is information exchange between Marquette Township and Marquette County Road Commission. Do you guys want to open your meeting?
Yep. Open the meeting. Go.
We'll have a pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we do have one commissioner that is allowed to vote by Zoom. That's Commissioner Carlson. He has an ADA and the board approved that ADA. So, he is allowed to vote remotely. Commissioner Williams is on and he is there for and not even to vote. So...
Commissioner Williams is not attending. Bill hasn't signed in yet, but I did talk to him.
Okay. Do you want to grab that extra agenda from Lynn?
No, it's right here.
Oh, you... No, it's for us.
Lynn?
Aye.
Letso?
Yes.
Robert?
Aye.
Carlson's not here yet and neither are Williams. Williams is absent.
Is agenda approved? What agenda?
The approval is... I'll make a motion to approve our agenda for the special work session with the Marquette Township Board.
I'll support that. No conflict?
Palenti?
Aye.
Letso?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Karen?
Conflict of interest?
Yeah, there's no conflict of interest.
So, we can eliminate four, five, and six. Public comment. Is there any public comment from the...
Okay. Thank you for coming and making the trip and hauling all of your stuff with you. Appreciate that. I had a little bit of a conversation with Jim Iwaniki last week and to try to get a feel for what this discussion would be. We didn't have a specific agenda. I don't think that you guys did either. We want to try to do this and meet with various county organizations, at least yearly. And we did this last year. Was it, no, it would have been two years ago, maybe three years ago because of COVID. And it was extremely beneficial, extremely informative. We know that you've got some stuff going on. That's what I asked Jim to kind of let everybody know. P. LaRue is our trustee who's on road committee. I know he's got a handful of questions to ask, but do you want to go over your stuff first and then...
Yeah, just what I've got handed out here is was asked to look at some of the DDA project lists and ideas. And if they're short one, there's a couple here from that.
I think we're okay, Jeff. I think we're okay. We got one extra, so that's good.
This is from the DDA project list. And Lynn thought this would just be a good place to kick things off. It's a written document. I kind of responded to some of it real short. And then I do have a couple of things that I think come off of this DDA list that are at the end. So, you know, a lot of the DDA stuff is talking about motorized, non-motorized paths. And I think there's moments of opportunity to do that. One of the hard things right now in accomplishing those things is that we don't have any major projects scheduled in the immediate area that they're talking about. Our next project is Ontario Street, finishing that down to Wright Street. And that will be in 2024. So, that will complete that and we will do like we did on the other two sections. We will do that safety path, bike path, whatever they're calling it these days on that section, and we'll complete that. So, that's kind of the next major project that we have going here that will deal with a path. We'll kind of go through these. You know, one of the things that was talked about with the DDA is a connector between Wright Street and 41. When we moved the traffic out and changed 492 to go out by Target, one of the things we did is we restriked the old section of Wright Street. So, now it's striped as three lanes with, you know, a significant shoulder on each side. So, you know, for us as the road commission, that is kind of acting as that path. It's not officially named. You know, it's not off to the side behind the curb. But at this point in time, I think that works well for those non-motorized people that want to use it. And if that's something that the township is interesting and naming as a bike path or something, that shoulder, that's something that we can work with you on. But again, I don't think there's a necessary need to remove curb, push it in, and then pave behind it. At a certain point, that will be required and maybe that is when water lines need to be replaced. If we're going to do a big upgrade on the road itself, that's something that we'll probably want to talk about. But I think for the near future, if we can just use that restriked area as the path, I think that would be the most economic for both sides. So...
Can I ask a follow-up to that, Jim? So, if the township or if the DDA has seed money to apply as local match to grant funds, they're currently eyeing up the same funding sources we had on the highway for that last section between Wright and Commerce? Any opposition to that?
I think the road commission is all in on doing that. And if it's on our road system, we will be the sponsors because I think you have to be an Act 51 agency. We have done that in the past with the township. We would be happy to do that. But again, from that, you know, you guys got to tackle us to say, hey, hey, we want to go after this. And again, we will write a contract between us and the township. And if you've got to deal with the DDA, that's between you and the DDA.
Yeah, okay. Just so you know, the DDA did already authorize two years of a half mil within their district, which generates about $100,000, just shy of that, I think. So, and that's what they earmarked for, the non-motorized facility, basically from the discount tire contracts down to that church and then the store in Commerce, 41 to order. So, that's already earmarked money.
Okay.
If we're successful in getting the grant. So, as long as the road commission is on board to assist us with that, I think that's pretty...
Our only concern with being involved in those grants is it was probably about 15 years ago, Chippewa County did what a grant and the group that they used that asked them to do the grant for them kind of didn't do what they were supposed to. And then Chippewa County was on, road commission was on the hook for the entire cost of that. And they lost their grant money. So, that's why we asked that we have an agreement with the township.
Yeah, that makes sense.
To make sure that the right hoops are being followed.
Our faith and credit is more reliable than...
Yes.
Subsidiary and understood.
Yes. So, on all these non-motorized grants, again, we're happy if they're within our right of way to be the sponsor. If the ones that were on MDOT's right of way, we didn't feel that it was the right approach to have the road commission be the sponsor out of our right of way.
Okay, appreciate it.
And just as background too, the DDA's meeting that generated this list up to this time was last week or, yeah, I think it was last week, it was traffic time. So, the board hasn't seen this. It's draft. It's just being finished at the staff level. So, John and I were going to bring them up to speed tonight on what this is. So, they haven't seen this yet, just so you know.
Kind of the next one it talks about is connecting to the city of Marquette's paths. And again, whatever that is, whatever route that is, if it's on our, kind of same thing applies. If it's on our system, we'll be happy to be kind of the sponsor and we can help with some engineering stuff. But basically, it will be the township coming up with the money to do the paths. Okay?
All right.
So, let's kind of flip this page and talk about regional park that's kind of out of the road commissions. Baileywick. The next one at the bottom of the page is non-motorized and talking about maybe using Brookton Road. Ernie's probably been around when that's been talked about in the past. Brookton Road was a hot item when I first started at the road commission. It was in pretty tough shape and there was discrepancies with the neighbors. They wanted no trees cut. They wanted to make it a scenic road. They didn't want the road widened at all. So, to me, that's a local political thing for Marquette Township to deal with. Again, we'll be happy to help and sponsor and as that is worked on, you know, help with paths or whatever. But again, that's a political issue that the township has to decide what's the best use and what do we want to do there. I do believe we have the full 66 footer right of way, 33 feet on each side of the center line. There was back in the, when I first started here, there was an argument over that. I think that that argument has been solved and I'm, we have the right of way there.
I think we have change of residencies over there too.
Yes.
Which helps a lot.
So, again, it just kind of the same as the other paths. Happy to work on it, happy to be sponsors of those things. But again, I think there's that political issue that you guys have to answer.
What's a McNet, McNet, I believe?
Yes.
And one of the residents said, no, they can't do that because that's a McNet road. I said, oh, yeah, you gotta move that little white thing down there and get it out of the way.
So, again, it is a McNet road, which says we're, the road is there by easement, but we do have the right to cut trees. We do have the right to do what we need to do for road and path purposes, public purposes in that 66 foot right of way, 33 feet on each side of the center line. There are some challenging areas along Brookton Road that, you know, will stretch some engineering concepts, but I don't think there's anything out there that would prohibit a path from going there.
Okay.
On the next page, median beautification. This is basically an MDOT issue. We do the maintenance for MDOT with the mowing on the highway, but it's at their direction. There's lots of ways we can skin the cat there. If the township was interested in working with MDOT and having a contractor cut that area or maintain that area three or four times a year, I don't think we as a road commission would be opposed to giving up that section and letting, kind of working with the township and MDOT to let somebody else do some of that work. Obviously, we still want to do the plowing and whatever, but the spring cleanup in the median, if that is better and will want more attention to it, that's something that needs to be worked through MDOT. But we're open to those concepts. And I don't think that we would be the barrier to make something like that, you know, stop, you know, those kinds of things happening.
Yeah, the board's always felt that was very important. You know, it's our front porch, our front yard and whatever. And the DDA is extremely on that. You know, we've talked about lighting and cutting the grass and planting trees and whatever we can do there. And we kept getting shot down by MDOT, but, so we're just going to keep pursuing whatever it is we can do. That's really what we need to know.
If you have a timeframe for your funding source, now would be the time to start discussions with the TSC manager because that's whose support you're going to have. If you're going to look at a formal median type project with that, you know, with MDOT or through MDOT, then I would start that discussion with Rob Turtle as soon as possible so that you can get a feeling as to where he's going to come from with respect to some kind of a future beautification project in all our 41. So, that's just based on my experience with MDOT, so...
Just out of curiosity, or maybe for everyone's information, Jim, I think MDOT normally will agree to cut it at least once a year?
We will cut it when the budget is normal. They'll tell us to cut it one time, and that's usually before the Fourth of July. They want to cut before the Fourth of July. Sometimes they will say, yeah, we have enough money to do a second cut. And they will authorize us a second cut. And that sometimes happens in April, third, April, August timeframe. But again, two cuts is about, is kind of in heaven. Usually, it's just one. I will say this year, expect one. We are going to be over winter budget. I think they're going to be scraping in Lansing to cover our overages for winter. So, they cover winters, no problem. But it's the summer budget that there's just enough money in there to cut the grass once, fix the potholes, and do some minor stuff throughout the county. So, again, it's, I think it's going to be a tight year and I would be surprised if we get authorized to do a second cutting.
Well, with some of the changes we had because of the road project too, I mean, there's different stuff in the median now anyway. We may not even need it. It's hard to say. If we get a lot of rain, the grass may grow pretty heavy.
So...
Walmart bags keep rolling down when it rains.
Jim, what's the distance then? It has to be less than a mile, right?
Or...
For a cutting on 41?
I don't know, Joe. Again, I'm talking the whole state highway.
Oh, I was just thinking just within the township of Marquette.
But again, if the township has to convince MDOT that they should get more than one cutting or more than what we're cutting other areas. And that's really the discussion there is, is what does that look like? How many times? And if it gets past more than the one or two that they've already gotten budgeted for, they're going to ask for some help. And again, from my standpoint, if it was, if MDOT came to us and said, hey, Marquette Township's going to have a contractor do it and we're going to take $5,000 off of your mowing, I mean, we're not going to jump up and down to keep the mowing of the section of Marquette Township there, okay? But those decisions are made at the TSC and MDOT.
So, if the township wanted to do an extra cutting using road commission resources, what kind of challenges does that create?
We would need permission from MDOT. And then, again, we would look for a contract with the township to cover those costs.
Yeah, but as far as having the equipment and manpower to do it, you still have to squeeze it in somewhere.
We'd have to squeeze it in.
Whether it's for us or the MDOT.
Right. Again, it's a question of, again, if somebody's paying us, that comes, the priority goes up a little bit higher.
Supplemental.
Right. But that's really what it is. And the question is how often and how fine? If you want a push mower type look, that's probably not us.
Yeah, it's not us.
So, but if that's the look that DDA is going for, then you should be talking about watering areas and you should be talking about a lawn care contractor doing that type of mowing. If it is just keep the grass at this high, cut it once a month, whatever's there, the weeds or whatever, that's a different story. That's more our equipment. And so, it's whatever the township's desire is or the DDA's desire is in that regard.
Wouldn't the ultimate goal be to have plantings that you do not mow and that would grow about this height, not so high that it captures all the trash and everything, but plantings that are native and no one has to mow it?
That would be ideal.
I've actually talked to the Conservation District numerous times about that because we were looking for a safe crossing as well at some point, especially at night with the hotels trying to get over to Buffalo Wild Wings or something. And I can't, couldn't really get an answer. What would work in there?
The hard thing about that is it needs to be very salt color. Okay? And that's probably the thing that moves that into not many plants.
It's also got to be able to stand up to the weight of sand too.
Yeah.
Because you put that down the highway as much as you are salt sometimes.
So, again, there are some special considerations in that regard. You know, there's all sorts of techniques like rain gardens and all that good stuff that's out there. I'm not the expert on that, so don't.
Yeah.
I'm not the one to ask on that. I think there's some other people out there that'd be able to give you some better information on that kind of stuff.
But your organization will be open to that if we found something that did not have to be mowed or maintained?
If MDOT cut our contract for mowing in Marquette Township, we wouldn't throw a hissy fit. If they talked about doing that countywide, we would throw a hissy fit. Okay? Because again, that's summer budget for us and winter budget for MDOT is about 90% of our budget. And it's less than 10% is our summer budget. So, we have an unbalanced summer and winter. And so, we're putting a lot of resources in during the winter time. And then what do we do with those guys during the summertime? Well, we have temporaries because of that large imbalance because there is no summer work for those guys in that budget. And we can't use that, that budget isn't big enough to have full-time people this summer. So, again, we always push MDOT. We want a bigger summer budget. And if they said, hey, road commission, we would want you to cut the grass four times during the summer in the entire county, we're there. They're not going to do that because that is a low priority for them. They would rather spend that on a drainage improvement, a covert improvement, you know, shoulder improvement. That's where they'd rather spend that bulk of money.
I think a good parallel would be the city of Marquette's, the beautification section down in front, P. Kelly's endeavor there. Maintenance, we don't touch that nor do we touch the centers of the roundabouts.
So, the beautification does the centers of the roundabouts?
Those are volunteers.
Yeah, I know. I know what the beautification committee is. They do, they, is that what you just said?
Not the hospital one, correct. The Durant one. They only do the one up front, yeah.
So, they're responsible for that one?
And the city of Ishamig does the one out in front of our office on Second Street.
Because at one point, Marquette Township Beautification Committee did do the marigolds in the middle of the road. And there were actually mounds, I'll call them, that were covered with marigolds. But we stopped doing that because we probably didn't have enough help. That's probably why.
Probably. And they were watered too.
Well...
They were watered by the township.
That's where the idea suggesting native species that don't need to be maintained makes the most sense.
They'll still need water. That's a problem. And it's not just the salt that you're talking about. The wind is very hard on the plants out there. So, there's a couple of things that I'm sure Michigan State can help us with if we really want to go in that direction.
It's not my decision, I'll say that.
Yeah.
The DDA is going to continue to pursue it. So, maybe we have Turtle come to the meeting in six weeks.
Well, you know, I'm trying to follow the conversation here. And you're talking, on the one hand, we're talking about maintaining a mowing cycle to make, keep the grass in height and the weeds down that's in between the median and then the drainage areas between the two roundabouts. I'm assuming that's where you're focusing on.
No, we're thinking between Pizza Hut, actually. That's the main part right in front of us here, between Pizza Hut and mall.
Okay.
That's what the DDA is focusing on right now.
Okay, so you're still talking about...
That too.
On one hand, we're talking about mowing and what is the frequency of mowing, what's that I'm not going to allow, what we're going to be on the budget. But now, you know, hearing you're talking about you want to do a beautification project and now you're looking at native species. And if you're going to get into that, I would advise the DDA to start having some serious discussions with people who have that knowledge about zones, you know, because if you're looking at zone three or zone four type of native plants, you know, what are you going to expect from those native plants? Are you expecting to see some kind of flowering during the summer and the spring? That may not be the case because of the fact that you've got to have plants that are going to survive not only salt, sand, or the heavy snowpack from, you know, from the bank, from the snowbanks. And so, and once you get a lot of salt, it's permeating into the sand, you know, that doesn't go away from a rainstorm. So, there are a lot of issues I think that you have with respect to a beautification program. So...
We want something there, you know, and short of not being able to put rain garden type rocks and bushes and little trees because we can't, we're trying to figure out, we can't seem to get an answer from MDOT. I think Elise just forgot us at the Conservation District the last time we visited because I asked her if she could give me like plants, you know, grasses, whatever, something. And I know it has to be a certain height. It can't be overly...
Right.
Like three or four feet high or something. And I think I just need to reach out to her again and see if she says, is there an option?
Your best bet is to go through the, you know, through Michigan State. That's your best bet.
Well, they gave us some elaborate stuff when they did the corridor project with rain gardens and stuff. And MDOT kept saying, nope, 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 nope. So, we just keep going in circles.
Well, what MDOT doesn't want is, it doesn't want to be responsible to maintain what you put in there.
Sure.
And so, they may ask for some kind of an agreement between the township or actually because you're not Act 51, through the road commission, having some kind of a contract to maintain native plantings. And that's what MDOT is going to look for because they don't want to be stuck.
Native planting, I think a lot of us think, well, you don't need water, you don't need this, it's going to grow by itself.
We could get the, what do you call them, the elephant eaters, bring them over here when they decide to kill them off of Wright Street because the Conservation District's going to work on that next. Or they're hoping to, hoping to get a grant to get rid of all those.
Do you have any master gardeners here in the township?
I'm one.
Theirs are...
We do have, we do have master gardeners here and we have a circle.
That might be, your organization, the master gardeners, might be a way that you can lead to encourage discussions with the Michigan State.
But that's a whole separate issue, right, Lynn? I mean, we want to know about the mowing and you're saying that's once a year or maybe twice if we're lucky. If we choose to mow, we just have to get some contract with you?
It's all a process.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we've done that in the past as well. We've mowed the corridor before.
We would have to, we'd have to get MDOT's permission.
Mm-hmm.
Saying, hey, the township would like to mow some additional times and they're willing to pay the road commission to do that. Are you okay with it? Or often than not, they'll say they're okay with it.
Yeah.
Again, it's, it would be a, I don't think it would be a difficult thing.
Yeah, I don't think it was before.
And then from our side, we would charge time and materials and equipment and already a half percent over it. That's what we'd want to do.
Or maintenance guys would be thrilled, but not Harriet's, but it does have to be elephant eaters.
Who's going to be thrilled? They're out of control.
They're maintenance guys.
The neighbors and everything.
Really?
Well, at least we kind of know.
Like the DDA.
You're the lay of the land, my grandma would say. You know, we just keep getting all this information. If we could get something confirmed, this is what we can and can't do. Again, we thought we were going to do lighting and trees and everything else. And BLP said no. And BLP said, no, we can't do this because it's too, the reach is too short. And we can't put them back in the cement, we can't put them here, can't put them in the middle of the road, we can't do this. So we want to do something with the corridor. It's awful.
What about cleaning up, picking up the highway? What effect does it board it out or not?
We were going to start two weeks ago, but.
No, I mean a group.
That's not an issue. They have the adopt the highway stuff.
Right, we got one in Harvey.
Yeah, it's just a matter of coordinating. Again, MDOT would like that to be done at a certain time so that we can pick up the garbage for everybody about the same time. If there's a special event or reason to do that, I don't think they would be opposed to it. It just.
Land policy, safety factors and stuff.
Again, adopt the highway is the right way to go with that.
I think the township board did it three times that I remember. And it was just the board and spouses or, you know, girlfriends, boyfriends, whatever, maybe some kids.
No, the board gave me a walk-up.
MDOT kind of, they finally kind of said they didn't want us out there.
Well, that, we don't care what they say.
We had some vests and everything.
Yeah, we don't care what they say.
So Lynn, I have a question. So Jimmy, you talked about the bike path and the markings. Is there a way to mark that with a bike person so people know that's a bike path?
If the township wants to designate it, I think we would request a correspondence from the township requesting that of the road commission. And I don't think it would be denied, but I would like that to be an official request.
I can tell you, I drove that road today and people are confused. They believe it's too late. And so if we're going to, if I'm going to put my eight-year-old on there on his bike, I want to make sure it's safe. And I still don't know that it would be safe, but.
Paving markings aren't as bright as on a paper.
Kind of like in the city.
And they've used buffer zones too before the complete street and your bike lane. New little chevrons with a buffer zone between that and the lane. They've stricken it that way and cities do a way to.
It's dangerous, it's dangerous out there when you're nine. It's dangerous enough when you're 50.
There's ways around it.
Again, we would, if that was the request, there would probably be some different pavement markings, additional pavement markings. And again, that's why we would like the request to come because from the township, because I'm not willing to do that to every road.
Right, right. But it's a well-traveled bike path there.
What's the cost involved with that?
Payment markings and doing the pavement markings regularly. Because it's a chip-sealed road, those things only last a year. And so that's really the issue is that we paint it regularly.
And then the special pavement markings are more effort than painting a line too.
So I don't know those costs right off the top of my head. It's not hundreds of thousands, it's probably a couple thousand or less.
Cheaper than building a separate, physically separate vertically or horizontally multi-use path. Because you're not building infrastructure, you're just adding paint.
Do you have to support the pavement markings with signs?
Yeah, there will be some signs in there, but the signs are $50.
No, I'm just saying that signing would be hard.
Yep, and then those pavement markings, waterborne, the cheaper ones run about 15 to 20 cents a foot. And then the higher-end ones run about dollar, dollar fifty a foot approximately. Then you got your symbols, I think it'd be paying for them, paying on those. It's a rough estimate.
Would have to be on both sides? I'm trying to picture the road.
Yeah, it would be two ways.
It's white, not on both, okay.
Because it's a paved shoulder. You don't want people riding a bike in the same direction toward each other on one side of the road. Because one of them's automatically going to go into the driveline. When you encounter opposing traffic, it's better to have bikes each on their own side of the road.
So we're thinking from the city limits then all the way to 41, right? On Wright Street?
No, just this old section of Wright Street. The path down on what I call 492, the through route from Target down. Once you get past Forestville Road here and Commerce intersection, that, I would not recommend that. That's a two-foot shoulder, I think.
That's what I was trying to picture.
There's not much real estate there.
There's not, there's not much real estate there. When we redid that, it was a right-of-way issue. And that's why we didn't do any widening as part of that. If there is a want to connect to the city, I would say that want should come up through Ontario Street, Ontario that we're doing. We have a path there already and have them come up Ontario and come down Warner Street and connect that way. I don't think we want to encourage bike use and walking on that section of 492 from the city limit where the guardrail is up to Forestville and Commerce Drive. I don't think that's a safe.
Yeah, when she was saying that, that's what I was picturing and I thought, God, how much room is there?
6,000, 8,000 cars a day.
So at one, at one point, the hope was that Warner could go right through into the city and become a bike path through Tom Turville's property and connect that way. It would be relatively safe for our bikers. So do you own Warner to Tom, to the, does the road commission own the road to the city?
I'm going to say I'm 95% sure we do. Without that map in front of me, I didn't look at it.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way is there.
And so have you ever, has anybody ever talked to, that you know of, talked to Tom about allowing that through there?
It was talked about probably about 10 years ago.
But Tom don't own that anymore either.
I think he still owns some of it, Pete.
Well, you don't own the apartment complex.
Correct, he does not.
When we're talking about paths non-motorized, that's township. That's something that you, we can help with that. But we're not going to spend our budget on making non-motorized paths through 19 townships.
So that's our job?
That's the township's job. We will help, we will help secure grants, we will do what we can to help those townships out. But you guys have to be the driving force behind that.
We have to find the funding sources that they would be eligible to apply for with an agreement from the township to cover the local match.
Yeah, well, it's a good partnership if we could make it work.
Yeah, agree. That's why we need to maintain the relationship.
So I have another concern. Must be my turn again, right? I'm extremely concerned about the speed limits on Ontario and the markings that people can pass. So is that there because that's a county road and we just put up signs that say pass with care on Ontario? Which is a pretty short street and it's a pretty big neighborhood with lots of people walking and biking and lots of kids. And so just tell me why the signs went up.
Because we signed it because it was a county primary road and that's the way we do it. Let me say that those people that don't want to obey aren't going to obey. It's the same reason why it's on 492, there's a short stretch of 492 as you get to the city. If it's something that's allowable by engineering standards, we've generally painted that that way. We have made a couple of exceptions. And those exceptions are generally a township having a concern that you have. When those are the case, I ask that something be written, I bring that to the board. And I let the board make that decision from a political side. And it's been done, but from me as the engineer, I'm going to strip it the way the engineering works.
And I understand that piece. So if we're concerned as a township for our residents and our visitors, we just need to put together some kind of a letter?
A two-paragraph email. Township Board requested, or at the township meeting last night, we are requesting the road commission to double-yellow the entire time next time they paint.
Okay, thank you.
Now, speed limit's a different story.
I know, I know.
Speed limit's a totally different story. But again, putting double-yellow down there, it's not a big thing. If you ask me on 492 Wright Street, I would say, board, I'm opposed to that. We should keep that passing lane there. And that section of Ontario.
It's up to what the board feels.
I think that's more of a political decision and it's more of, not a through road, it's more of a residential like you talked about. And I think that's, there's some benefit to that. Another one that asked that was Nagani Township on County Road 510 from Midway Drive 502 up to the first couple of miles where all those residents are. There was a couple of passing zones in there and the township asked us, hey, do you mind if you double-yellow them? Again, took it to the board and the board said, yeah, we're okay with double-yelling. But that's something I'd like the board to make a decision on.
So let's go back to Linda's spot with marking the bike on the side.
Bike lane.
Yeah, the bike lane. Where are we talking then?
We're talking from.
From her side?
Yeah, no, not from her side, but we're talking discount tire, discount tire down to the school.
Cause we, this is on our agenda for tonight too, to do a recap for the rest of the board and the public. So we can bring these up and see what the board thinks about, you know, giving some letters to you if they want to pursue that for either one of those projects. Okay.
The next couple here, you had event space and then you had lighting along US 41, US 41 lighting, that's strictly an MDOT issue. Lighting in other parts of the township, again, that's a township board issue if you want more lighting along the county road corridor. Okay? I would ask that the DDA look at their zones. And we have a couple of critical road projects, I would say, in the DDA zone. And if you look at your DDA map that's there and then a couple of roads that are in that map, that connection to behind Myers, to Wright Street. And then as far as the DDA boundary goes, towards Forestville Road behind here on Woods, I think would be projects that would be very critical to look at. And those two road projects are, I think, going to be a bigger need in the township than you realize. There are a large landowner in the northern, northwest part of your township that is looking to develop into residential. And it's not only residential on this side of the Dead River, but on the other side of the Dead River. And that is going to play hell with our road system. I have a concern as that area develops with the intersection of Forestville Road, 492 and Commerce Drive. Right now, that is during a peak hour, is what we would call a failed level of service. It's not pushing traffic from the side roads out. And so when you have a failed level of service, people tend to take chances. And when people take chances, that's when accidents happen. So my concern is as development happens, and that is the only access point right now from that area to the rest of the township, there's going to be more traffic and more people are going to take chances. As they get out there. So I think that is, that is something that you as a township board have to take a hard look at. We have, Alex is working on a traffic study to talk about some options. Not only what you have shown in your master plan, but what is on the other side of the Dead River? And how do all those roads connect if they start to get developed? And what is your zoning? And is that something that the township wants to develop into residential housing and other activities? Or is it truly what you have in your master plan and in your zoning right now and that's what you're going to stick with? That changes how we as a road commission interact. You know, we have some, we have some grave concerns there. And I think that's something that we're going to have to work on over the next couple of years. Ernie, I think you remember about 15, 20 years ago, we had this issue with the Walmart going in. I think that same issue now is going to be pushed that way. And we're behind the eight ball already. And so I think the more we can get together and decide what's the best action? And how do we fund these improvements? Because it's not just road. It's water and sewer and how are we going to go about that? I think that is the biggest thing that Marquette Township Board and the road commission can work on. And I think it's critical.
See, at one time, there was some discussion a number of years ago off of 550. And then trucking back in through there. And we ran into some problems. Funding was a major one. But also the bridging and everything else to bring all that around that too. So that is another, long-term, I think it's going to happen. Maybe not my lifetime, but it will happen because you're going to have to have another outlet somewhere through that area.
So to talk about that, the road commission is currently working to try to get the Ash Hall Road. And that's in the road master plan that the township has. We are negotiating very hard because Wisconsin Electric wants us to take care of all contamination. And they don't want to be responsible for anything. So that's not acceptable to us.
Clearing intermigration for the length of.
So if that doesn't happen, we're going to walk away from that. But again, what we're trying to do is, you know, secure that is one way. The other issue is that there's two Dead River, actually three Dead River crossings, right? There's the one in the city of Marquette at 550, there's the one on Forestville Road. And then there's the one out in 510 in Nagani Township. Those are the crossings we have. Does there need to be another one? Question. That's some of the stuff that we might study here and what Alex is trying to put together. And I think there is a need for a connection between 550 and 510 in the northern part of Marquette Township. And you know, there's some roads that go through there that aren't public right now. But I, but I think we should, you know, have that discussion and bring Nagani Township in to talk about, you know, they're talking about that connection a little bit, not, you know, in great detail. But their township has a need for that. And so I think that's something that we really want to focus on. And if you guys can have some talks on your end about what that looks like. Again, funding those roads, Ernie, are, you can't do it, we can't do it. Are there moments of opportunity to do it? Are there things that we should be looking in the port barrel for? You know, yes, we need to do these things that are on the master plan, but there's no funding for it at all. Can the DDA help us with that? Is it something that, as a township and growth in the township, is that something that the township board wants to look at? Is that something as, hey, road commission, A and B, can you help us with C? I think those are the things that we really need to look at as part of developing it. Cause like I said, I think that is the most critical thing we can do jointly.
Jim, can you talk briefly about the concerns we discussed previously about that intersection regarding other types of intersections as far as signalized, roundabouts, that kind of thing? Just so it's on the table.
So my concern about Forestville Road, Commerce Drive and 492. Hey, let's just put a signal up there, okay? That will solve everything, right? Well, we can't stop the traffic on 492 because we'll never get it restarted in a lifetime. Again, we can have a permanent sander out there and a winch and that's the only way it's going to happen. So again, we won't be able to restart that traffic. So that's not the spot for the intersection. Okay? So we need to find another way to put something there, okay? So do we eliminate that intersection? Do we make that intersection only people from here on Woods to that point can use? Do we look at another intersection closer to the city of Marquette? We looked at that. I don't think we can make that happen. Do we look at realigning Forestville Road to kind of look like your master plan? And make all the people use that? Do we put a roundabout in or a signalized intersection at Associated's? Do we put a roundabout in or a signalized intersection at Associated's flat spot there at the bottom of the hill? That's, that's really the, one of the only options we have if we're going to have to stop traffic. We can't stop it at where HQ or, what is that called? By the old forest or Fish and Wildlife intersection? There's an intersection right across from it going into that open space, but we can't stop traffic there because, again, we've got another 5% grade right there. I think if we can pull that intersection back into, as you come across that curve by the school and use that space that is currently being used for storage of construction materials and equipment, if we can use that as the intersection area and then head to the west towards Walmart, or not towards Walmart, but towards Myers and then hook in Forestville Road somewhere on that road, I think that is kind of our options at this point.
Really not a good spot at all.
It's not a good spot, but that's the best we can do. But that's, those spots are going to get eaten up quick and unless we are thinking about it, we're going to end up just like we did at Walmart. We won't be able to get that loop road in behind Walmart because the development happened and we were too late. This is the same thing. Now's the time to talk about it and even if we need to secure that area so that we can put an intersection in there in the future, those are things that I think we need to be looking at because I tell you, that's to one of the sons and they're probably looking to make a buck. Real quick. And they're either going to do that by development or by us reserving that for future road space.
Watch, it's gone, it's gone.
It is.
So, a joint meeting with you and us and the planning commission probably would be a good idea as some of this develops.
And the other.
Before it develops. Let's, yeah.
And the other thing that you got to think about is this won't be popular with some areas. The township is going to have to support probably some condemnation in some areas. Cause, cause again, not everybody's going to be thrilled about this. And so, those are some of those political questions. Is it that important? I think it is. Do we have the political will to do it? And if we don't have the political will to do it, we'll end up like we were on Walmart and we'll, we just won't have that, you know, backdoor connection. And that is going to limit the development that you can have. So, here's one of the discussions I had with John. All right, so much traffic is using that Forestville Road intersection from development and it's coming from both sides of the Dead River. And we're having accidents there and people are getting injured and killed. What does the road commission do?
Close the roads.
Well, do we close the bridge? Do we close the Dead River Bridge and only make that accessible, access to emergency vehicles and then force everybody to use 550 north of the Dead River? But that still doesn't help the development south of the Dead River, which there's a potential for a lot in getting that traffic out. But those are some of the considerations that we have to think about. So, again, you guys got good planners here? We need to get together because that's not our bailiwick, the planning side of it. And getting that, those public meetings, that's something that you guys are better at than the road commission is.
Remember what he said a few minutes ago? If you close the bridge on Forestville Road, your way across the Dead River is 550 or 510. Those are the next two closest ones. So, keep that in mind.
I think we also have to put up some scenarios, different ones to look at. So, we can talk all we want right now and it's whether we remember it up here or something else, but if we can start putting on paper on different scenarios that we're looking at far as future development, things that we're concerned about, then we can start working towards that direction on that too.
Well, I think we're already there, Ernie. It's just some of the things we haven't been able to talk about publicly yet. And.
It's not the first time.
Now, we have to kick it into high gear.
Like in the next couple of months to have another meeting. Or month, whatever your timeframe is.
I think it's getting to that critical point and we, there needs to be some decisions made of what is the future road and even if we can't build it right now, you probably need to look at securing the right of way for that future road.
That ties into what we're talking about tonight with the two contracts on water analysis and all that, as to the future needs of the township on water and everything else. It's all tying, it's all coming together. A lot of loose ends and we have to start tying those loose ends up.
I think you're right, Ernie. I think you've seen it two or three times in your evolution here.
It's time for me to leave and let someone else see it too.
But I, I think you can, you know, you can express that frustration that you've had in the past about watching these opportunities pass by because we weren't in front of them.
Okay, you let us know when we can talk about this again.
I, I think.
Or John, you and Don.
I think the township has to say, we're ready to talk and we're serious about talking and we're ready to maybe take some flak from the public or get support from the public on doing these things. For us, it's easy. I think it's more difficult and politically for the township to talk. Okay?
And we're at that point now where we need to start having that conversation. I think we just heard the urgency expressed from the road agency, right? So, now we have to start talking about it and we can slowly start including more of the details as they become official.
I think what they projected development on Forestville Road, Forestville area, that's happening, I think it's going to be accelerated relatively quickly now.
I think the first thing you have to do is tie up that property.
Oh.
Before you do too much talking or, you know, having a public, tie that property up first.
That's a big commitment from the road commission.
Did you bring your checkbook?
To tie that property up. And I don't have that money sitting in my back pocket. And again, if it is not something that the township wants to politically pursue, then it's not good for the road commission to tie that up.
Well.
Because that.
Board needs more information. So, when the, when we can get more information, we need to meet again.
When, when is the township? I'm trying to frame this a little bit better. Do you have, the township has planners, I assume? They have a planning committee, long range planning committee, correct?
Yeah.
We have two full-time planners on staff.
Okay, so where are you at with respect to your long-term planning with respect to the undeveloped area that would be accessing or using Forestville Road?
It's already done. The problem is we're seeing something proposed that is allowable, but not currently zoned. A PUD.
Where are you at with respect to having public meetings?
We're not.
Getting input from the public with respect to what you want to do or not do?
Well, it's in the math and the road facilities part of it, but this is.
So, the master plan calls for rural residential in this immediate area, which is five acre lots. It's never going to happen that way because it's not financially feasible for any developer to do it. That's why it's being proposed as a PUD and that's about all I should say regarding the specific project. It's happening, starting to move very quickly now and there's more issues than just the transportation issue, but I think the transportation issue is the one that's looming largest immediately. The discussions have happened at staff level on both sides multiple times with the developer and without the developer. So, now we're waiting for the developer to come and present to us their plan so that we can start talking about it officially a little bit more. In the meantime, some of the things Jim just talked about, we need to start moving on with more urgency.
And our engineering staff at the road commission has done some high-level route planning about what might possibly work. And so, that's in our back pocket and that's why I know what I talked about of where the best intersection would be is because our staff has put time in to try to plan on our side, where would that be? Is it feasible? Yes, it's feasible and there's some opportunity, but that opportunity might close real quickly for us.
It might be politically more feasible also compared to some of the other options, but it's probably going to come at a cost, a greater cost.
So, if you have, if you're planning on a PUD, and I don't know any of the details about what is, what is being planned at all, if you have a PUD, then you would know roughly, you could calculate how many residents you think that's going to generate.
Already done.
And based on that, you would have the developer paying for the road improvements based on the impact of that many residents.
To an extent. Yeah, I, I agree with your argument.
Michigan law, I can force them to make improvements in front of their development. I can't force them to make improvements a mile down the road.
Just in front?
I can make them do stuff in front of their development. And in front might be, hey, here's my frontage and I make them work a little bit over here in close proximity, but I don't think I can force somebody to work a mile away and improve the road from that intersection or put a new road in.
No, but you're asking them to contribute to the future impact on growth.
And that's where the township has the power. And I, as the road commission, can't do that.
And our zoning will require that analysis be done before we can approve this plan. If it gets approved, we don't, it's too early to know.
Let me ask this question, John. I understand PUD discussions and negotiations, I understand all that stuff. My concern as a commissioner is what is the timeframe that I have to look at with what action is going to come from the road commission with respect to county road improvements to support whatever comes out of your negotiations? Are we talking one year, two years, five years down the road?
Yes, yes, yes. I think all of the above. Now, that being said, Dr. Lyer pipe just went up 90% in the last year.
I understand material costs.
Whether or not that plays a role in the timeline of this development, I guess it's probably a little too soon to know for sure. But I'm feeling, based on what I'm hearing from them, that they plan on coming in next month for their initial sit-down with us to discuss their plan. Jim knows this, he's been involved in quite a few conversations already with both of the developers. I guess we just need to get our act together on this part.
Well, the board can't really act until that triggers poll.
We need to start the discussion though.
I mean, at this level.
We need to be careful about how detailed we get with these discussions if we're talking right-of-way acquisition, either via purchase or condemnation, whatever process you're thinking of considering, we got to be a little bit careful about how far we want to go here.
So, is safe to say from a commissioner, from me as a commissioner standpoint, I'm going to be paying attention to what the township board's going to do and when you're going to do it and when you take action. Once you take action, then that's going to trigger action on part of Jim and our engineering manager coming back to us as board members saying, okay, here's the plans that we've got to look at to support whatever the board, township board approves. Is that safe to say that? The issue is this. The improvements need to happen relatively quickly in the next year or two if we're going to be in front of. It took us eight years to fund the section from the bottom of Target to connect into Wright Street by the school. It took us eight years to get the funding and get that in. And that was quarter mile, less than a half mile. So, that's how much behind the eight ball we are with making some of these things. And I think from a standpoint of we might not be able to build it, but we should try to secure the right-of-way that we need so we can build it in the future. Part of the problem when we did that section from Target down to Wright Street is we waited, we waited, we waited and two more buildings got put in our way. And that's why we have a hard S curve there because those buildings got put in the way. And so, the more we can talk about what that route is and what we're going to do maybe 10 years in the future, if we can start securing that right-of-way, both from a township perspective and a road commission perspective, I think that would be positive. And I don't think either one of us can do it alone. I think we've got to take a, take a look at that. And I put that in the DDA thing because, again, most of this that we're talking about immediately is in that DDA. And that is a pot of money that can be used to help make this happen. It might be smarter to use it sooner rather than wait three or four years for it. That's why I included it in this and thank you for letting me rant.
Well, that's why I said maybe we need to meet with the planning commission, the three of us, and if you want to include the DDA in the next month, you know, and I wasn't sure how quickly this might be able to be talked about.
I think staff needs to meet again first, road commission and township staff. And then we can come to you with what we think might be a concrete plan and a recommendation. Is that sound fair, Jim?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
How sure are you that the developer will be before you within the month or two with his plan?
They scheduled a, I'm going to get the terminology wrong, pre-application conference, which is May ninth, I believe.
May ninth?
Something like that. And I believe we should at all costs try to get road commission staff to that meeting if we can. I don't know, were you invited to it?
Yeah, I just was though.
It's not that there's any surprises coming from the developer, but if we're not at the table saying the same thing, we got a problem.
I will be unavailable, but we will have somebody, or two somebodies or three somebodies there.
I guess, you know, my, I'm just wondering if, you know, the guy who's developer, the developer's got this PUD and if that person is looking at what their long-term material costs are going to be for their initial development, are they going to be able to pull it off? Cause you just, you know, you mentioned that Dr. Lyer just went up a huge amount. Well, the same thing is going to be for other construction materials. So, I, you know, I'm all for continued development and I'm all for trying to do something to help with the problems that we have, you know, at Forestville Road and 492 and Commerce Drive. And I'm kind of here in limbo sitting here trying to figure out, well, how fast are we as a board going to have to move once staff comes to us and says, well, the township's ready to go, you know, you need to do this. And, and I think we need to be ready to pull that trigger if we're going to help the township out.
Ray, our current economy, of course, is the biggest question mark in all of it, right? I'm thinking they're just being good planners and getting this as far down the road as they can so that when they can afford to do it, they do it. Knowing full well that if we approve a PUD, they've only got so many years to act anyway.
True. And what it's really is, it's the cost of housing in around the city of Marquette and that's really what's driving it. And the availability and the amount. So, and again, that's, you're the next closest. It's you or Chalkaway.
We saw this coming, right? I mean.
We have the open land.
Yeah.
That's, that's the key to the whole thing and that too. And they're moving out here, they know that, so I think we have to get a reduction order upfront regardless of whether they actually move now, we have to be prepared to what we think will happen.
If we're lucky, we can get ahead of them.
Yeah, yeah. Because we're talking about Forestville down here. I'm going the other way, I'm going up 492. Look at the land that's out there. There's a lot of possibilities out there. You don't know what's going to happen there because we have the land and that. So, just a matter of, is it feasible for them to do it?
Yep.
People look at, you know, around the Marquette Township and down in the Chalkaway Township and looking to do something.
492 south of the highway isn't quite as landlocked because we don't have a river running through it. And there are other existing roadways, Grove Street being the first one that comes to mind. We have Commerce that's acts as a, is that Commerce on that site? Acts as the frontage from 492 over to, what is that? Oh, that's Brooklyn.
Brooklyn.
That's when he's going to widen.
That's what he's going to widen for.
Wrong direction.
The thoughts of the thing, we're looking at this, but this, that has to be in the back of our mind over there at the same time.
I agree, yep.
Because there is land there, because if it doesn't work here, someone will look over there. And it's maybe a lot easier there. You have to run sewer and water and that. We have sewer and water up to a point, it's just a matter of extending it. And it's a lot cheaper for a developer to extend that than build roads and that.
Well, interestingly, you had mentioned earlier you're considering some proposals tonight for township infrastructure.
Yes.
If you looked at the OHM proposal, the most expensive part of that is helping us look at these undeveloped parts of the township and determining what kind of demand that's going to create. Knowing that we've already got something on the radar that is far more dense than what current zoning allows. That could happen a lot because we have the land, so, down there too.
So, does it hate roses?
Well, this is good, it's a good thing that the DDA, the DDA side of it came out first, you know? That plan was just drafted and released to the, that board anyway, so.
Can you answer Rose's question, one of my questions? Roadsoft, how, how much area do you cover with your Roadsoft program? And is it, do you run a, a Roadsoft program?
We do Roadsoft programs. We are, we count local roads every three years. This is a year for counting or rating the local road system or paved the local road system. We will, we don't have a schedule yet. I can't say Marquette Township's going to be done in August. We'll, it will be done and we'll have that stuff compiled for you. And we'll be able to share that information with you by the fall.
If we want it, Quitchell, we have to do it ourselves and we can't guarantee it'll be done to the same consistency that you're doing the rest of your effort. Because it's different raters.
The handstand has, we've, we've been lucky over, we've been rating roads since 2000. And since 2000, we've had two different raters, people rating. Currently, the person that's been doing the road ratings has been there doing it for 12-plus years. So, we do have that consistency. Again, we will, we will be doing half the primaries and all of the locals this year. And we, again, we'll get that information out to you as, as we get it done.
Because of lots of our planner, we lost about two, three years of, of our Roadsoft program, so.
We didn't lose it, we just haven't been able to keep it updated. Just because we had to hire somebody with a different skill set.
And if you need us to transfer some information so you can play, we have that data and I am happy to work with whoever you got on your side to transfer it. If you want, you know, stuff that we've already collected.
Because at the meeting the other night, most of the bids are all put out already for the townships and that. You know, that's when you're supposed to put them out and get them. So, we're just behind, so we have to get it lined up for next year. One way or another, we have to hire somebody to come and do it.
Well, let's keep in mind the money that we've decided not to spend this year because we didn't have a project to spend it on.
For three years?
We've kind of earmarked for Forestville Road.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen.
Not necessarily by formal board action, but general consensus maybe? Or maybe I'm making this up in my head, I don't know. But there's $50,000 in the budget this year. We know a portion of Forestville Road was never paved when the village came out. From Wright Street to Hereon Woods, the rest of it was paved. If I'm blowing smoke, tell me I'll stop right now, we don't have to continue the conversation. But it's a $150,000 cost estimate to pave Forestville Road from County Road 492 to Hereon Woods. That's three years of our current funding mechanism, which is currently underfunded by village.
So, won't we have to discuss whether we're going to change the whole Forestville Road and want to put that money in there?
Yeah, we're not spending it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
We actually got lucky in that Brian left when he did because it left a little bit of a knowledge gap here and we didn't rush to do something that maybe we would regret six months down the road or even next month, right?
So, there's still discussion to happen about what we do with that.
This is the first time I can think of where the township might have an opportunity based on money it already is setting aside from the general fund, not Road Village, to maybe help address some of the issues we're talking about today.
So, I have one question still then. Okay. Okay, so, when you, I'm on the planning commission and we just approved a business. We, we didn't know what business it was, but everyone in the community knows what business it is. And so, to get to that business, you have to turn into, I'll call it Lowe's, Myers. And then they're going to turn and that, you know, there's going to be an increase in traffic. I'm always concerned about the traffic coming out of Lowe's, out of this new business, out of Myers, onto the highway. Can we, is there a way, or maybe this isn't practical, to force that traffic to get out of there through the roundabout? Decreasing accidents, decreasing near accidents, near misses, as we would call that in my profession.
Not by public road.
Well, that's my question. Is that true?
We only have one public road there. MDOT could close a driveway. That way, we'd have a hard time justifying closing that driveway. It may turn out that to provide a better connection, we might need to have that existing driveway to become a public road.
When they redid the 41, wasn't GFS's exit?
What's that?
Wasn't GFS going to be just a right-only exit? Wasn't that in the original plan?
Well, it, it is now.
It is.
You can't turn left.
You can't turn left, you got to go right to go left.
Yeah, it's a boulevard.
It's a boulevarded section.
I never go that way, I go to Burger King. Just because I don't want to get stuck.
I very seldom use that intersection. I come into that intersection all the time, but going out, I very seldom use it. I, I understand that. But as we're talking about development and grades and how things-
Right.
-tie in, again, the public road ends at the 90-degree going to Brickyard Road at the roundabout.
Okay.
Where are we connecting? We connecting there with what we were talking about earlier? Do we need to connect there and because of traffic have another connection, which is already built, that's a private road?
So, we have lots to talk about.
Those are a lot of things that we need to sort out. I don't think closing that intersection, although it's not as safe as the other one, would be good because that would take, put more traffic on that roundabout and that will have a definite impact. I think that helps diffuse some of it, even though it's not as safe. It's not carnage. And again, it's-
It's dangerous.
It's dangerous, but the, the issue that we're having is when there was traffic signals there, you got natural breaks in the traffic. Now, at the roundabouts, it's kind of continuous traffic. And it's kind of the same thing, that intersection is our concern out in Forestville Road. As you sit there, as you're the third or fourth car back and you've been sitting there a while, that third or fourth car back, their patience has already been used and so now they take risks.
Right.
And, and that's, that's when those bad decisions happen. And that's what we're, that's what's going on there and that's what will happen more at Forestville Road as that development happens.
So, we need to look at ways to reduce those risks.
Those, right. And, and again, the more places we can diffuse the traffic, the better off we are.
So, they were also talking about after this new development happens, that more development will happen to the west of that building.
East.
E, east?
East.
West back in the, back behind it.
It's just, just behind it.
Anyways, anyways, more development to-
A little strip mall.
More than, yeah, well-
That's what's on the plan.
Correct, but it's other stuff too, they were talking.
So, so that comes to the next question. You heard me talk about possible condemnation. If that intersection and the current Brickyard intersection aren't, isn't enough, we need to create another one. Maybe there's another one we need to create west of the current Brickyard intersection. And, and that was talked about when we were looking for that bypass as part of Eagle Mine going in. But that was going to go into some people's property that were very connected here with the township at that time. And the only way it was going to get was condemnation. And that's something the township wasn't going to support at that point in time. Peter's property.
Oh, Kathy's not there anymore.
But, but, but again, the, the, tho- those are some of the issues. And so, as you get that more development in that area, we will need to get a second intersection, current private drive, and then we're going to need a third one. That third one isn't there yet, but it probably needs to be. That's part of this whole thing that Alex needs to work on. And Marty Fatante talked to us in November. Thought that we, with some of this COVID money, that we could get a planning study done in this area. That was kind of cold until about three weeks ago. And because of this other development that we're talking about, the, what is it? Not Michigan Works, Alex.
Rural Development.
Rural Development is talking about possibly funding a $200,000 traffic study for this whole area. And again, that's something that we need to coordinate with the township. But again, that, that is part of this. And, you know, you have a long-term plan here, but we know this long-term plan is, with roads that are shown, needs to be expanded on. Not only in the area of, south of the Dead River, but especially in the area north of the Dead River. And ultimately, is the, will the township allow more dense residential in there than is currently planned for? And, and my bet is, probably. Probably.
We'll see what the planning commission has to say.
And right now, those roads in that area north of the Dead are very substandard and are not taking care of the recreational traffic that's there right now.
Yeah.
There's homes out on those seasonal roads and the recreational traffic is-
It's crazy.
Is crazy out there. And it's only going to get worse. And so, that's-
All those parties, Randy.
Right at the discussion.
Well, we need to get ready for our next meeting, but that might be a good segue.
Yes.
Tell us, staff will have to just tell us what we need to do.
Yep.
And when we can talk about it, with whom.
Yeah, John and I will work together and our staff will work together and we'll, we'll try to come up with, with us.
His ideas.
And our planners will come up with a good idea.
And we're going to need good maps too, to really know where we're talking about. See where the possible roads can be and where they are now and-
Yep.
There's already one right here.
Yeah.
And I take it from our master plan.
Yes.
I can't, I just don't remember the one.
It helps for us guys who have to have glasses for me. So, you want to, oh, adjourn? Sorry, motion to adjourn?
Hold the comment? You read that? I'm going to adjourn. Go, couple.
Palenti?
Aye.
Lutzow?
Yep.
Robert?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Thank you.
From Carolina. Good to see everybody, take care.
Take care, Phil.
Good to see you, Bill.
We don't know much and you just to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.